I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign and sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Readers shall approach the podium, state your name and address with our clerk's record, and ask the limit remarks to five minutes. Aug. March shall be directed to the mayor, who is going to determine, who shall determine if any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any items listed. Please call or vote.
Hendricks?
Here.
Streisand?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Coulterman?
Here.
Camprit?
Here.
Wilken?
Here.
All right, first item this evening is the draft minutes of January 18, 2022. Move through. If the motion is seconded, there is no further discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please ready the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Camprit, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Motion carries. Next we have the consent agenda, which is the claims and payables report. Move to the first.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please ready the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Camprit, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Motion carries. Next we have the confirmation of mayor appointments. First is Ken Dorsey. He replaces Zach Hartman to the airport authority board for the remainder of term.
Move to the room.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Yes, Craig.
Just for our purposes, I'm going to call out our motions in seconds so that we can keep up and it catches on the video. So moved by Camprit, second by Streisand.
Okay, is there any further discussion? And you would call, this is the one where we changed the ordinance to address, so we're yeah, so we're in the same, same as, in harmony with the state statute. All right, please register your votes. Please ready the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Camprit, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, next we have a public hearing. This is for a house moving permit application of Jerome and Victoria Glazer. Tim, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a house moving application for the remaining house on the water tower project. The builder, Teakin House Moving, has complied with everything that we have asked. We've got insurance. As of yesterday, we have a signed bond. If you note, the one you have in your packet is unsigned. So he brought that to our attention. Larry of the electric department has driven the route and verified the 17 foot 10 inch, that they're fine heightwise. The builder has notified with the help of city hall, the 13 residents that are involved in the street closing permit on the Columbia part. The route, if you've not noticed, comes off of Jackson 7th to Main to 1st, down 1st to Ash, and then over to Columbia. They anticipate 20 to 30 minutes move time at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, if everything goes. And they'd anticipate the majority of the day to set the house on the foundation. So I think the closing permit goes to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow afternoon. So with that, it's pretty straightforward. We've notified all the businesses along 7th Street for no parking tomorrow morning. And they are aware of this. Once the house goes by, then they'll be able to park you downtown again. With that, if there's any questions?
Thanks, Tim. Any questions or comments for Tim?
The bus barn has been identified too, as far as, they usually go down Columbia.
I don't know if they've been notified for sure.
That'd be the only other one, just to let them know. They usually will take Columbia down to the Goodwin. But they'll see that they're closed.
Yeah, barricades. Bob Myers putting barricades up right away at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, so you better be out of your house by then.
I'll figure a way out.
And we can make sure this court district's aware.
Yeah, just so that.
Good, not surprised.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? It's a public hearing, so I go with the public comment portion of the public hearing. If there's a public wish to comment on this item, please do so at this time. Seeing no wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council for any other discussion or questions. If not, I guarantee a motion.
Move to the, go ahead. Move to the room.
Second.
Moved by Streisand, second by Singleton.
Move motion and second, anything for discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please ready the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Camprit, Coulterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Thank you. Next item under administrative items is a presentation and acceptance for the 2020 to 2021 annual audit. And I mean with Marcy Lou, because I believe she's zooming in.
That's correct. We'll probably turn the lights down here. Derek, since you're in front of the computer, you're going to have to talk to Marcy. And then we have speakers hooked up, so pretty much everyone in the room should be able to hear her. But we may have to reiterate questions if we have specific questions, and Derek can relay those back. And so if you want to blow that up full screen or
You can hear us, okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine. How's my volume?
Oh, she's coming through there.
Your volume's really good.
Good.
All right, you can go ahead.
Okay, super. Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me join you via Zoom to present this year's audit results. I want to run through a couple of things in addition to the audit report itself. But you guys should all have in front of you a benchmarking spreadsheet. It's a two-page spreadsheet where we have 12 different ratios, and that's where I'm going to focus my discussion tonight. But before we get into that, I did want to mention the audit report itself, which is about a 70-page bound audit report that you guys have. We have an unmodified opinion, which is always the goal when you go through an audit. And that's to have an unmodified opinion, and that's presented on page three under the opinion heading. And so I think everything went smooth this year. We were glad to be back onsite with the audit field work, and I think that really helped things wrap up nicely this year. The thing that I want to focus on is the benchmarking spreadsheet, and I tell you, you guys have that in front of you. I don't have sharing access, but I'm just going to talk through it as we go. But what this spreadsheet does, it compares Seward to other cities of your size across the state of Nebraska. We work with about 70 different municipals, and so we break those down into cities of your size to really get some key ratios that we can use to compare, you know, where you guys are at compared to other cities. And I always mention as we go through this, you know, these are not right or wrong because you may be higher or lower than your peer groups, but it's just a measuring stick. And what I think is very useful on this spreadsheet is the five-year analysis that's provided. This is Seward's five-year history. And I think sometimes looking at those trends and where you've been really helps you see where you're going as far as the finances. So starting out here, we see at the top the valuation. You guys' valuation per capita is about 71,000, and that runs about 10,000 per capita higher than your peer group average. So you have a stronger valuation in Seward than the cities that we're comparing to. The first ratio, item number one, is unrestricted net position compared to total net position. And I'll note on here, we do have page numbers, and these correspond back to the page numbers in the financial statements. You know, 70 or 80 pages of audited financials is a lot of data, but we try to get zero these key ratios back into the financials so you could read back if you wish to. But what item number one simply says, unrestricted net position is basically the net position that's not restricted by either donor or legislation, and it's also not tied up in capital assets. So it's more of your liquid or flexible equity or net position. Our recommendation is that that run between 25% for governmental to about 40% for utilities or business type. And you can see that you guys are running about just shy of 30% overall for the government line. You're about 24%, so right in line on the governmental. And then business type, you're at about 34%. So a little bit light in all categories. And you can see that on the governmental side, that decreased compared to last year. So just something to watch. We've got a little bit less in the way of unrestricted net assets available. Item number two is your top sources of revenue. So again, if we look back historically, you guys have been very consistent. As we compare to the peer group, we can see that sales tax-wise, we're a little bit less than the peer group average. And that's just proximity probably to Lincoln, the bigger city, where you guys are versus some of the other cities of your size that may be more of a standalone retail hub. Property taxes, you can see you're at about 225, very consistent historically, a little bit less than your peers. And that's to be expected because you guys have a little bit more in the way of valuation. And so we don't have as much coming in in property tax, but you have very strong a sales tax and other sources of revenue. Your state allocation, you can see, very consistent historically. It runs a little lighter than the peer group average, driven mainly by municipal equalization. Because your valuation is stronger, you have a lower overall tax levy, and so less in the way of municipal equalization. Your grants and contributions, you can see there, this year was a higher year. And that's going to really swing up and down depending on the year and what you have going for programs in the community. And then franchise tax, you can see you're running very consistent, but you guys run ahead of your peer group average in that category. Your state allocation, I already mentioned, the municipal equalization is virtually nonexistent in Seward, and that's because of the levy rate that you guys have with that higher valuation. The highway allocation has been very consistent over time. Your expenses per capita, we see first of all, the administrative expenses. Again, as we look back on all of these categories, very consistent historically. We can see that you guys run well under peer group average on the administrative costs and also on fire and rescue. Now, keep in mind with the size of the community that you guys are, some of your peers are going to have a paid fire and rescue staff, where yours is more in the volunteer side, so you don't have as much in the way of costs there. Item number five, we've got your outstanding geo-debt compared to valuation. Anything less than 3% we say is excellent, and you guys can see you're at 1.1%. So in very good shape as far as ability to service governmental debt with the valuation that you have. Over on the second page, we've got item number six, which is your unassigned fund balance compared to general fund expenditures. So what we're trying to look at here is basically how much unassigned fund balance does your general fund have compared to what it costs to operate the general fund this past year? And you can see you guys are very strong at about 89%. We recommend having at least 30, and so you can see you're very, very strong in that category. Item number seven is your month's street cash, which you guys are running about 6.7 months. And you can see that's been very consistent historically. And what that tells me, we like to see that held under 12 months, and that basically is just telling the state, hey, we're using our highway allocation money as is intended. And this says just that. You guys are putting the dollars back into street projects rather than just hoarding the cash in your street fund. So we like to see that going back to work. Item number eight is your tax levy. And again, here, you guys are less than your peers. Your valuation is much stronger. And again, because you are less than average as far as your overall tax asking, that means we don't receive the municipal equalization that some of the other communities do. Item number nine is comparing the net depreciable capital assets, so after depreciation, what's the book value versus the original cost? And what this is telling us is how old or how depreciated out are your capital assets? We like to see that be at least 35% because if it falls under that, it really signifies that there's going to be some major capital expenditures needed in the near term. You can see for the governmental side, you guys are at about 57%. And for the business type or utilities, you're at about 41%. So good in both categories. It indicates you guys have put some pretty significant dollars into capital in the recent history, and so we're in good shape there. Item number 10, we have your operating income for utility funds. Here, we like to target about a 15% operating ratio, and this is simply targeting that in order to continue building the cash reserves necessary for ultimate replacement of those very expensive utility systems. We can see that the electric fund is coming in about half of what would be recommended. So they're at about 8%. You can see that's improved over the last couple of years. But still, something we want to watch and monitor is you guys are studying those rates to try to target hitting that 15% margin. Your water and sewer fund, very good shape as far as that operating ratio. Item number 11 also looks at utility, your utilities, and looks at the debt service coverage ratio. We like to see a one and a half times coverage, and you can see that you're in good shape on the electric and water. Sewer is coming in at .27, so that's one that we would watch, just making sure we've got adequate cash flow to service that sewer debt. And then finally, the last section, item number 12, looks at cash reserves. And so we simply take a look at what does it cost to operate your general fund in that first section, which was about 2.4 million, about half a year's operating cash, compared to what you actually have in unassigned general fund dollars. You have about 4.6 million, so in very good shape in that general fund side. On the business type down below, we also take into account any upcoming capital replacement that's anticipated simply based on where your depreciable capital assets are, also your operating costs, and any debt service restricted dollars. And so that says we should have about 13 million in cash reserves. You guys are just a little light of that, but very good shape at 12.1 million. And so I think overall, as we look at these ratios, it's showing some very strong things. A couple of things we want to keep our eye on, like the electric rates, the sewer debt service coverage. But overall, I think it shows good trends in your community. I'll open it up for questions on the benchmarking before I point out just a couple of things in the audit report itself. Are there any questions on that?
Nick, do we want to explain what we think the debt ratio is on Seward?
We can.
Do you want to do that real quick?
Sure, I'm going to
Head over there by Marcy so you can
So Marcy can So we were looking at the debt service ratio on the sewer, and it looks like it looks like the ratio is pulling in the current year debt service requirements, which is pulled from the cash flow statements, which included the refunding of the sewer bonds. And so we're thinking that just kind of skewed that. When you net that out with the proceeds, it looked, the ratio looked really good, so.
Good, good. I appreciate you looking into that, Nick. And yeah, yeah, I'm sure that that is what it is, so. And that makes sense based on where the operating income ratio is, so good.
And the same thing happened last year, because if you remember, council member Schmidt asked about it in the water fund, when we refinanced the water debt. And so you see last year for the water, it was at .49, and that was the same exact situation with that, correct, Nick?
Yeah.
Yep. So we noted that when we were looking through this.
Good, good. We'll make a note of that and try to get that corrected for next time, so thank you, guys. All right, any other questions on that?
Seeing none.
I just want to, okay, I want to point out just a couple of things in this bound audit report itself, and I'm going to just get some very high highlights because we really talked about the finances as a whole as we looked at these ratios. But again, on page three, it's an unmodified audit opinion. The management discussion and analysis is really the only place where you will find comparative information in these financial statements. Most of it presents just 2021's fiscal year. But on page eight, you can compare assets, liabilities, and net position to the prior year. And so this shows your assets were up, your liabilities were down in total, and your net position was up. So those are all trending the right direction, and we would like to see. Page nine shows a comparison this year versus last year on program revenues for the governmental funds, and then total revenues for the governmental funds. And here we see that program revenues were up about 621,000, but program expenses also increased about 390,000. We saw some programs bounce back with four years of operations after the COVID year this year. And so that drove some of the charges for services to be higher. It also drove some of the overall expenses in programs, especially environment and leisure, and some of those to be higher this year as well. Under the bottom table, you can see total sources of revenue. That was up about 1.1 million over last year. About half of that increase was in capital grants, which was up about 515,000. And again, those grants are going to vary from year to year depending on the project. On page 10, we've got the same thing for your utility funds. We can compare this year to last year. Your revenue on the utility program revenue was up about 2.1 million. Meanwhile, your expenses increased about 781,000. A huge chunk of that increased revenue you'll see on the bottom table was charges for services, that you guys brought a very large plant online, and that really drove some of those charges this year, as well as having businesses and everything, your college and everything back open for the full year this year. Also, you'll notice capital grants and contributions was up about 630,000. And so that was also a large increase in revenue for the utilities. Page 11 shows some major capital asset additions, continuing on to page 12. So you can see some of those larger dollars that were invested, what the various projects were there. And then the table on page 12 shows your net capital assets. And here you see the governmental activities increased over the prior year, so you invested more than depreciation took those down. Meanwhile, your business type held about even, so the investment in capital assets was fairly close to the depreciation expense this year. Under the debt, at the bottom of the table, you can see 15.3 million was the ending debt for both governmental and utilities, and that compares to 17.2 million a year ago. So debt overall decreased about 1.9 billion, or about 11.2% as you made those scheduled payments. Jumping over to page 14, your main body of the financial statements. We show governmental and business type. Business type, of course, being utilities. And then the component units off to the right. The component units consist of your airport and your library foundation. So they're combined on page 72. You can see detail of those. But that's what is included as we look at those component units. Going to jump ahead through a few of these. On page 16, the other governmental funds that's referenced there. Those are smaller funds. There are four different funds detailed on page 70 that all roll into this. This page, I think, is always important to look at, you know, it's one thing to look at what the cash balances of the funds are, but I think it's always important to note the fund balance on page 16. So you can see, are there restrictions? Are there commitments, assignments? Things that cause some of the cash to be tied up, for instance? And so it's always important to understand what's unassigned compared to the other fund balance components. Over on page 18, we've got your revenues and expenses for the governmental funds. You can see your general fund revenue exceeded expenses this year by 559,000. And then as we move over to your utilities, on page 21, we have your utilities. And in the center of the page, you can see that operating income line. That's where we're targeting that 15% ratio. And then cash flow wise, on page 22, I always like to look at the subtotals here. Your cash provided by operating activities was a positive 3.5 million if we look over at the total column. You used 2.2 million of that for purchasing capital assets, 1.7 million, as well as paying down debt, 3.9 million. But you also brought in 3 million of new debt, and so that all netted to a $2.2 million use of cash. And then investing activities was just some interest income, no big activity there. But overall, your utility cash increased 1.3 million this year. Couple other things to point out. Page 42 summarizes all of your cash, whether it's restricted, unrestricted, governmental, business type, or component unit. That totaled just a little over 21 million at the end of September. Over on page 43, you also have a little over 800,000 of investments for the library foundation that are included in your financials. And then page 44 breaks down what was restricted cash and CDs. So 5.4 million of your primary government was restricted for the various purposes shown in the narrative beneath that table. Capital, or excuse me, your LBA 40 loans are detailed next. There are 15 different LBA 40 loans, which total on page 46, 814,000 outstanding at the end of the year. The capital assets, we've talked about, but if you just look at the additions column, page 47 shows your governmental activities. The additions increased 2.5 million, so that says you purchased more or invested more in assets this year. Then depreciation took that down. Page 49, same thing for the business type activities. If we look at the additions column, you see that you invested about 83,000 more than depreciation. On page 50, the airport authority has shown depreciation was less than investment by about 158,000. Debt is shown over on page 51. Here you can see the additions as well as the principal paydowns that are shown there. And so you can see for the governmental, you ended with 6.3 million. For the business type, you ended with 9 million. And the airport had about 357,000 in debt at the end of the year. The various outstanding issues are detailed out over the next several pages, including capital leases. Governmental is summarized on page 54, and then holds into your business type. And if we jump back to page 58, on page 58, there is a table that shows the principal and interest requirements, governmental at the top table, over each of the next five years, and then in five-year increments thereafter. This just kind of helps show what's going to be required cash flow wise for principal and interest payments in the near term. And then the bottom table shows business type in the first two columns and the airport or component unit in the last two columns. Couple other things to point out. On page 60, your CD maturities are listed out there. So out of the 5.5 million the city has in CDs, those maturities are detailed out. And then the various financial institutions where those are held are shown at the top of page 61. The contractual commitments that you guys had at the end of the year for various construction projects are listed at the bottom of page 61, as well as the expected completion date on each one of those projects. Some good information there. And then your TIP projects are shown, starting on page 64. There are 24 different TIP projects. And even on to page 65, it shows there was a total of 329,000 of TIP proceeds received under those various projects. So you can see the remaining number of years, as well as the TIP valuation on each one of those projects. We then get into some budget versus actual comparison. I'm going to jump back through that a ways. And point out on page 70, are those smaller funds, those four funds that all got rolled together as other, just so you can see the detail of what those are. Page 71, those same funds, revenues, and expenses. And then 72 and 73 give you the detail of the component, your airport and your library foundation. And finally, the last two pages of the bound audit report, because you guys are governmental, we always have to report the internal control and compliance report. And for you guys, as with, I would say, 99% of our clients, just due to the size of organizations we work with, we have segregation of duties comment. And this is just a reminder to you guys as council members, as you're reviewing claims, as you're monitoring the financials, just be sure and ask the questions that come to mind because it helps that you guys are monitoring the financial activities and asking questions just to help mitigate that segregation of duties. So that's the item that we have to report on that page. Any questions on the audit report?
How many years have you done this for the city of Seward?
You know, I would say five, maybe? I'm not 100% sure, but I'm saying it has to be right in the range of five years now.
I think this is our fifth. Is it good or bad, Matt?
That's good.
I don't know what that means.
No, that's great. You hate to switch every year.
Yeah.
That's hard, that's hard on everybody.
It's hard on the staff, and I think Marcy can speak to it to the degree of the auditors, but they also have to learn then every time, and it but they also have to learn then every time and it just really, really bogs down the process. Where I think with Nick being there for years now and his connectivity with them and really understanding the process and Julie at the office, they were really able to get a lot of stuff ready this year and prepare it. So when they came in, they were very efficient and able to get stuff and they knew what kind of things they would be looking for and got it all prepared and laid out. So the audit was incredibly efficient and then they knew the follow-up. But Marcy and her staff also do a great job of sending us information ahead of time and saying, hey, go start getting all this stuff ready. Go pull all this stuff, send this stuff to us. And it's just an incredibly efficient process. I think this was the most efficient one for the amount of time they're there with us that we've had out of all five years. So thank you to her crew.
Yeah, and the same here, Greg. I think you guys and Nick leading the charge with the staff there did a phenomenal job of preparing. You know, we always, as auditors, we want to be organized and have you guys pull some information in advance, but we always try to throw in a few extra questions and, you know, try to mix it up. You don't want to just get complacent because you know the client. And so, you know, we maybe dig into a few things and ask a few questions, just trying to make sure that we're covering all the bases. And I think that's very important as auditors, that we continue to do that. I think one thing that could really help you guys, maybe just internally, and we had it in a letter of recommendations, is maybe as Nick totally gets his feet on the ground there and he gets everything under control, is just looking at your chart of accounts and deciding, hey, is it time to do something different, you know, to make the reporting a little bit easier internally for you guys? So that's, that's kind of the main gist of the recommendations that we made in our letter of comments. But I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job on that end and we really do enjoy working with you.
Any other questions or comments?
I move that we accept the report.
Second.
Moved by Camper, it's taken by Colterman to accept the audit report.
Is any further discussion?
I would just, I'll just give kudos to my staff and to Nick. This is always a hard process. He does an incredible job of following up once the audit report is delivered to us. We review it together. We go over it with staff when we have questions. The whole city hall staff, especially Julie, helping out, especially with all the new staff members that we have. I know Mindy helped out with that. It's just kind of putting all that information together. It can be a disruption with all the other things we have going on, but Nick and his leadership has been paramount to, to the product that you have in front of you. So thank you, Nick.
Good job. Thank you.
John, you want to add anything?
No, I just, from years past, since Nick has came on, things have gotten a lot better as far as the auditing process. We would hash this out a lot longer and, like I said, ever since Nick has come on, it has gotten a lot better.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Please ready for your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Camper, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you. Marcy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. With that, item number two, the amended downtown revitalization facade improvement commercial rehabilitation program guidelines. Greg?
Yes, so as part of our downtown revitalization phase three, we have to finalize the changes that we kind of discussed before in regards to our guidelines for percentage of match and things like that. And so they're included in your packet. I need to get my iPad up. But essentially, the two major changes are, we used to do approximately a 50-50 grant match. This time, we're doing a 75-25, still keeping the $50,000 limit. So if my project, the ask that I can receive is 50,000 maximum, that would be the 75 portion and I would cover the 25. And then on the applications, we're going to try a first come, first served basis with a very hard deadline for starting your projects. The biggest problem we ran into is a number of projects never got off the ground where they applied, some of them applied for up to $50,000. We'd wait around and wait around and then we'd find out that those projects were not being done, thus freeing up money. We had to do the second phase and then we ended up doing a third phase. And then we still had to match dollars to bring people up to 50-50 last time and it was just a lot of work. So this time, we moved to first come, first served. We're going to pick a deadline. The DTR committee set the administration to make the final application deadline with SEND. And so we'll get that out. We're going to have an open house on February 17th to kind of brief everybody on all these guidelines and update them. But first come, first served basis, we're going to have a deadline, like nine o'clock in the morning. Bring your application down to city hall. We'll just mark them and date, stamp them and time them. And those are the order that we'll process them through. And then we'll work our way through until we get to the end of the money. We'll probably at least move through a few of the next ones, just so we make sure they're same registered and do some of those things that don't cost a ton of time or effort so that if we have to move it down the line, as long as they're willing to wait, we at least have them teed up and if one of them falls out, we can slide another project over.
And Greg, how are you going to make sure that they do the projects on time?
We're going to, we're going to stick a deadline on it.
Just put a deadline.
We're just going to put a deadline in it and say, hey, by this date, you have to at least start it. We've got your contractor meeting done. We are a go. And if we're not a go, you move to the end. It doesn't mean your project may not get done. It just means you're moving to the end of the line. Because we have to keep them moving. We cannot keep waiting around for projects to start. We have some projects that went nearly two years and it probably took well over 18 months to even get them started. So.
Melissa?
I have a couple of questions. On number nine, it states that it will become a five-year forgivable loan.
They all were, all the previous ones were. We signed documents right at the beginning of the agreements. And so as long as you keep your stuff there, you didn't unload it or do anything like that, every year you, you're forgiven the loan from the city, the $50,000 that you get until it's five years, you've done 20% each year.
And that's what you did last time, right?
That was exactly, it was in all the agreements last time, too.
Yeah, but like actually walking through the process, it doesn't seem like that correlates with what actually goes down.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't loan you money or anything. We just say, well, we do technically. It's money that you gave to your contractor that was paid off. But if you change, it's by the standards. If you change them before the time, so I give you $50,000, you change your facade, the next day you walk back out there, rip it all back off and put a modern facade on. Well, we just spent $50,000 in state grant dollars for something that's not even there the next day. And so then we would be repaid. You leave it there for a year, you would repay 80%. You leave it there for two years, you repay 60% in that case.
Okay, so when that being said and following up with the improvements must remain intact for the minimum period of time of five years, the date, how is the dollar store being in that? Because there were downtown funds that were done for the awning and the windows and then it sold without the permission of council. And then it was torn out and ripped off and that was before five years.
We had to check in with SEND on that one.
Okay. Now that I'm trying to like, whatever, I'm just, does it need to be put in here if it's not going to be followed, is my only question?
It has to be followed. At least that's what the agreements they signed were. So we have to have some sort of clawback that if we don't do something correctly, that there's not something at the end of the day, the building fell apart, you burned it down, that something can be reclaimed. So that's our reclaim.
So these types of projects, you know, it's, you have two approaches. You do what this would have, which is a first come, first served, or you can have some sort of a scoring where you try to determine which ones are, or more worthy, for lack of a better term, and prioritize them that way. But the trade-off, you know, as you see with this, the trade-off is this, the first come, first served is a lot easier for administration because we're not having to score it. We don't have to explain why this project is better than that project. It takes a lot of politics out of this process, which is good. The downside is, is that, you know, potentially, if someone put in three applications or if they were, you know, someone was on the ball and was first in the door, you could potentially, you know, eat up more of that money than would normally go to other applicants if you have a larger pool. So that's sort of, just so you're aware, this is a little bit differently than before, just so that people are kind of caught off guard because it happens a lot at the state level because the state doesn't want to get involved in picking and choosing. So they'll often do a first come, first served. And I know one year, South Sioux City was on the ball and they took all the money in a particular fund because, basically because they put five applications in at 8:00 AM or whatever, whatever the deadline, whatever the deadline, whenever they started accepting, accepting applications. And so since then, the state actually has changed that to get away from the first come, first served. So there are some political risks doing it that way. But from, from administrative standpoint, it's easier because we're not caught in the middle of why did, why was their product, why was their project funded and not my project? Or why did they get more money than the other person did? So just so you're aware, this is a little bit different from before. I don't want anyone to be kind of caught off guard because I don't know how this is going to play out exactly.
And the DTR committee last time also stressed that they don't want to be the scorecard where they say, we think your project's worth a six, but we think that project's worth a three and this project's worth a two and this is a one. That's why, because they didn't do that on the first one. That one was strictly a leverage based on how much money you were putting in. But what we found was, when all was said and done, everybody said they were leveraging their project to get themselves high and then you had to do a bunch of funky math afterwards because they didn't spend $400,000 in their building. They spent 200. Yes, it's a lot, but as a percentage now, it's far, far lower. So you should be a lot lower in the scoring, but it was all after the fact. It turned into a giant mess. And so we're trying to avoid the administrative mess with this that SEND and us had to deal with and trying to re-categorize all these and explain it to everybody. This one is very simple. You've got all your stuff together, you got it done, you're the first one in the door. We're going to start there and that's where we'll go. So we still know that's $400,000 going into downtown as long as we get our projects done.
In the day, this is a great program. We just are trying to be fair as we can because obviously, there's a lot of businesses that could benefit from this.
And if we get done quickly, that gives us an opportunity. If we do want to go back and relook at the downtown plan and amend things, I know there was discussion of working alleys and other things that are exciting to downtown business and property owners that just aren't identified in our plan. Because your plan is your guide for your DTR. We could go back if we get this done quickly in like one year or so and then reapply, get a new planning grant for a small amount of money, update our plan, and then swing right back around and do a phase four and, and put money towards any sort of new ideas we have or, or big capital project. If we wanted to do a city related project like bump outs or whatever was identified before, we could do that, too. But one of the other reasons was trying to leverage time and do this quickly. So.
Any other questions or comments? Was it a hearing to motion?
I make a motion to approve the program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Camper, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Motion carries. Item number three, authorization for mayor to sign up documents related to the request for release of funds and certification for downtown revitalization grants. Greg?
This is just the required federal paperwork that the ED needed us to get signed and send, Kelly from send over. So we had to have formal approval of it to let the mayor sign it.
Any questions or comments or a hearing to motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. We're good.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Camper, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Motion carries. Item number four, consideration of approval of farm lease agreements for a term of three years. Kelly said we can do these all at once unless any of the council members want to pull any of these out and we can do them separately. While you're thinking about which ones of these you're friends with and which ones you're not, I want to read through them real quick. A, track one, northeast of Dog Park, 15 acres. Jared Haas, we have track two, Isaac K, 32.41 acres. Chris Beckler, track three, Northville Walker Substation, 12 acres. Mike Gertis, track four, parade of flags, 29.48 acres. Chris Beckler. And track five is northeast of South Second Street and Isaac Walton Road, six acres. DeGerald Shabin. If not someone wants to pull one out, I would entertain a motion to approve all five of these tracks.
We'll do, we'll approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Camper, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, item number five, amendments to the employee handbook dated November 15th, 2016. Greg?
We have two items here. We'll start with the first one. It's in regards to holidays and additional personal leave day recommendation. As you may remember, there was a declared federal holiday for Juneteenth, which is June 19th. A number of, the state follows that. I think the county follows the state holidays. And so we took a look at this item and compared to other cities. A few other cities were looking at taking advantage of this or they follow the state and federal guidelines and organize their holidays for comparability purposes. We include those personal days in our designee holidays as our total holidays. So we try to, to match that. We brought that information forward to the personnel finance and audit committee. And essentially, the recommendation, council member Wilkin, I think, is the only one that was there present for that one because Ellen and Carl are gone. But the recommendation was to go ahead and push forward. The reason they requested or recommended a personal day rather than specifically Juneteenth. Juneteenth will continue to move. Myself and Nick Wolf, when we make a recommendation, if we were to add anything, we said we either prefer an attached holiday, so one attached to the weekend for disruption purposes. It's easier for us to schedule around. Or a personally holiday because it just allows them to use it whenever. And it also still allows anyone that would like to observe Juneteenth, they can take this day and they can celebrate it on Juneteenth. We just know culturally, we don't have a lot of activities going on yet like Lincoln and Omaha do. And so if it was one where you have a lot of things planned, that might be a day that we designate specifically. And I think, I'll leave it to council member Wilkin to say anything else about the recommendation.
That's pretty much it. You didn't want to disrupt the week and have it on a Wednesday and a Tuesday and have people coming in and stuff. No, that's.
I can't answer any other questions or...
You do these separately, I assume?
Yes.
So item, this is item 5A. Much any questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Moved by Colterman, second by Wilkin.
Is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Camper, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Item 5B, updated general personnel policies. Greg?
This is a beast and it's, it's one of the reasons we sent it out to you in advance as much as we could. This was a project that actually began with Bonnie and myself, working through the review of the handbook and just trying to update it. There are lots of sections that are well over a decade old and they need to be updated for just changes in language, making things more clear. And so just the, the ease of use, like me and Derek and Nick predominantly are the ones utilizing it on a day-to-day basis to look up issues of payroll or whatever else. And there were whole sections where one section, like a section 1.5 would be like nine pages long. And you're like, where in 1.5 is the language we're even looking for? And so we wanted to start cutting it down. And when you get the final version of all this when we're done, we'll implement that even more to make it so it's easier to cite it. But we went through and we just said, we're just going to start at the beginning. And so Bonnie and I took the original crack at this thing. There are some sections that'll be noted in Derek's memo here. They're actually generated by Jerry Pigzley, our labor attorney, specifically the harassment policy. They're actually generated by Jay Piggsley, our labor attorney, specifically the harassment policy. The reason we wanted to update the harassment policy specifically, I think it's noted in the memo, is just, that's changed predominantly as it relates to human resources over the last decade, and it needs to be re-looked at. And then we wanted it to be looked at so then we can implement training. We just feel like we want to continue to do training, both on the harassment side, but also specific training for our management team. We have a really young, in regards to managers, the amount of years they've been managers, team now. And so we wanted to implement more management training, and one of the best ones to implement is harassment training. Both you learn the conduct that is expected of yourself and others, but also how to deal with issues that come about that you have to manage, where there's a situation taking place, and you have to manage those employees. And so we felt like the harassment one, which is contained in this, is one of the biggest changes that we would like to see and get updated. So then we can implement, but we didn't want to implement a training if we hadn't finalized the policy. Other things were included. Some of the policies were just ridiculously long. You would go on nine, seven, eight, nine pages about internet usage. And we said, we can probably skim this down, focus it more, and then if we need something more, we can just do an internal policy and say, here's stuff you're not supposed to do. And then the, the drug enforcement, the drug testing policy, that is all verbatim, right out of, and D, or D O T at the federal level for all of our C D L license holders. And we were like, why are we writing that out verbatim in our handbook? That thing might change so often that we were way behind. So we said, slim that down and then refer to all that and say, we, we follow the federal policies as regulated, because we have to. You don't have a choice. That's how C D L and being able to traverse across interstate travel is going to work. And so we just said, why is this in our handbook? It took up over nine pages on that one?
Ten pages.
Ten pages of a seventy-page handbook. And so when Derek's sitting there presenting it to a new employee, he's walking through ten pages of drug stuff or explaining at least to somebody who works in the library and doesn't have a C D L, but it's in there. And we're like, trying to explain away, well, if we give you a C D L at some point, you're going to have to go take these drug tests every periodically randomly and stuff like that. So we followed through with that. We can walk through this, I, I'll, I'll really leave it to your approach. That's the reason we sent this out in advance to you. This is the first chunk. The next groupings will probably be smaller and also still reviewed by personnel finance and audit. But those will really get into the weeds of like specifics of payroll issues, how overtime is calculated, on-call time, things like that, where you really have to be focused to understand the things that are going to be recommended. And a lot of those changes will lead more towards, here's the technical things that are going on that either that's not the way we've ever done it, and it's just not accurately portrayed in the language, or...